I'd like to call the meeting to order and welcome everyone to the Laverne Planning Commission, September 27th, 2022, at 6:00 p.m., regular meeting. We do have a quorum. First item of business is to approve the meeting minutes from the August 30th, 2022, public hearing and regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the public hearing, sir?
To approve both the minutes and the public hearing.
We have a motion to approve both. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Items number one through five under old business have all deferred. Is that correct, Mr. Logan?
The retail complex that would be across the street, the former car wash?
Mm-hmm.
They are out of deferrals and some of you may know, we've been trying to contact them quite a while, so they have run out of time and run out of deferrals. So there will need to be a vote on that item tonight.
Item number three, sir?
Yes, sir.
Alright, so item number three, site plan. Deuce Retail Center Building totaling 4,200 square feet on 1.28 acres requested by Chat Roads. Property located at 5130 Murfreesboro Road, tax map 15M, Group A Parcel 1, C2 Highway Service Commercial Zoning District, property owned by TN Group Properties LLC. Mr. Logan.
Do you want to call for representation or do you want me to go through the project?
Please.
Go ahead. Okay. Those slides have been removed because, so it's the report is what you've got.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, with the applicant not supplying the information as required by the staff and by the planning commission and not attending for the last three meetings, I'll make a motion to deny as submitted.
We have a motion to deny as submitted. Do we have a second?
One second.
We have a second, Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. So items number four and five are deferred as well, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir.
So on to item number six, first item under new business. Preliminary plat Arbor Ridge Sections 1, 2, and 3, 95 lots and approximately 32 acres requested by SEC. Property located on Waldron Road, tax map 32 Parcel 4, PDR Plan Density Residential Zoning District, property owned by BRS Development. Mr. Logan.
Now this is the preliminary plat request for Arbor Ridge Sections 1, 2, and 3, and you can see here on the screen, this large area in the middle of the screen is, this is the 214 acres that comprises most of the development. So zooming in a little closer, you can see, again, this blue line is the boundary. That's the boundary for the whole project. So of course, these are just Sections 1, 2, and 3. So on the zoning map, the orange color designates the low-density residential area, which is R1, and you can see this entire tract has the R1 base, the PDR R1 base. And photos for the property, so this is intersection of Waldron Road and Lake Road. So these three sections are just, if you line up the center line here, it'd be this area to the left. And the next photo would be if you're taking a right turn to go south on Waldron toward Rock Springs. So this is the S curve, of course, and this is all part of Arbor Ridge 2, just not these sections. There'll be ladder phases. So this slide shows the overall development and then the bold lines denote the three sections tonight that are on the agenda. So you can see the lot arrangement and the street arrangement. Basically, there's two large cul-de-sacs, or not large, but fairly large. So you can see this snowdrop avenue basically makes an arc around the development. And then, of course, you can see here closer to Waldron would be much further in the future. That's Section 12. But anyway, these sections here, probably remember those from two weeks ago at the workshop. So it's a total of 95 lots, and this is approximately 32 acres. Again, the section here bounded by Blair and Waldron is about 214 acres, so this is 32 acres of that 214. And these phases are all single-family development and I believe, there were no technical comments two weeks ago at the workshop, no staff comments. So I don't see that there's any that have changed since then. So that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do you have any questions or comments from the board?
I only have one question for staff. This does not, from the PDR that was submitted to the planning commission and it was approved by the orderman and alderman, this is, this is not Phase 1, 2, and 3. This is phases 3, 4, 2, 3, and 4. So Phase 1 was supposed to be all the way to the right-hand side of this property, if you're looking at it from this angle. So I'm just curious that, I thought was the purpose of the PDR was to follow it.
The discussion last year with the same plat that was approved was them just renumbering. They're doing the center portion first so that they can establish the connection piece as a whole, and that way, whenever we're doing the road widening, there's a bypass through this so that that section of Waldron can be widened.
So you're telling me that was what was approved by BOMA?
That was what was discussed here at the planning commission.
That's not, that's not what I have in the book that I have.
But phasing isn't part of BOMA's approval.
So let's ask our developer as well. If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record and just kind of touch on the logistics of that.
John Miner with SEC, 850 Mill, Tennessee Boulevard, Murfreesboro. It's basically everything that Mayor Cole had said. Typically, the phasing plan on the pattern book is, at the time, the best approximation of phasing, but it is subject to change with...
That's funny, because how it was explained to me is the PDR was, the PDR is the reason we did it, and it was set by that. So that's the only question I had. If nobody has anything other than, questions have been answered for me. Thank you.
The PDR is the zone, and that's the, sets all the rules in the zone.
Not design standards or anything else, right?
The, so alderman? I'd say in conjunction with our codes department is how they came to the determination that that would be the best route to go for the traffic pattern, once the road has been re-
Correct.
Thank you.
Chairman, a couple of questions?
Please, please, alderman.
So did, did, start, did you get the digital PDF? Because that was one thing that was outstanding, that getting submitted?
We, that's done, yeah.
And then from notes, we were discussing on the amenities center, you know, when, at what point would you be doing that? And you didn't, you didn't have an answer for me at the workshop. Do you have any comments on that, if you would, please?
Yes, it is in the pattern book. All amenities center, or all amenity areas are to be recorded with the phase that they are in and completed prior to 50% buildout of said phase.
Okay, so you're going to adhere to that when you're doing this then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had one. Does this have to have a male kiosk?
Yes.
Is it shown on here? And I could be missing it, because there's some little things that I can't tell what they are on a couple of these lots.
When we get to the digital, it'll be easier on us.
No, it's not shown on here currently.
I mean, would it shift around based on the phases? Would there be more than one? How does that work?
We'll have to coordinate with the postal service. Typically, they'll only allow one per development unless there's a significant division in the development. In, by division, it's typically a stream or a major thoroughfare road. So potentially, there could be two, but I would say that there's only going to be one for the development.
So it would need to go here, then?
Yes.
In this phase?
Yes.
Or one of these three phases that are going to be done?
They will allow it temporary locations until a permanent can be established.
Okay. So you just put it on one of these empty lots that you wouldn't be developing right now?
Correct.
Any other questions? We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept as submitted. Is that a second?
Second.
A second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No, by Mr. Rutledge?
No, because it doesn't match the PDR that was given to me.
Thank you, sir. Motion passes. Next item. Item number seven. Site plan, Palm Commodities, addition of 32 parking spaces on 4.11 acres requested by GMC. Property located at 1289 Bridgestone Parkway, tax map 17, parcel 28.04, I2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Fiji Strategic Realty Investors LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this request from Palm Commodities is for site plan approval for the parking improvements on this parcel. You remember from last week or at the workshop, so there's two site plans, one for the parking improvements, another for the building addition. So this lot is sandwiched between Hill Quaker and Bridgestone Parkway. And zooming in, you can see the existing building and existing parking and loading docks on the southwest side, too, of the building. So on this zoning map, the dark blue is I2, just heavy industrial zoning. So this entire area, all of these streets and surrounding area are all zoned heavy So this is the site plan from the workshop. And then, this is, you might see a very little difference. If you look right where I'm pointing with the red, you'll see that they've extended that footprint of the building addition, and they've added a note 20 in the center. Note 20 goes to the notes in your legend and just says that the design of the building is by others. So again, going back to that two-site plan model for this project, so this is just the parking improvements, and they've essentially grayed out anything dealing with the building. So that's really the only change from two weeks ago on their site plan to this, this So this addition is going to add 32 spaces, and the parcel is roughly four acres. The existing building on the site is 62,800 square feet approximately, and this site is not in an overlay district. And all of the technical comments from the workshop have been addressed, so that completes the report. Thank you.
Thank you.
There was one other exception on this one, is the sidewalk requirement. So I know one of them, it was mentioned to do fee and lieu, on the other, it was to mention to do the sidewalks. Working with the design engineers on both, they pointed out a, they fall under an exception that we do have that, I can't remember the percentage off the top of my head, but the building does not meet the percentage that would be required to trigger the sidewalk requirement.
10%.
So they're, they're exempt from that.
Okay. And do we have a representative here for this project this evening? Please come to the podium. State your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Ram Sarathy. I'm from Palm Commodities.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Question or comments from the board? Mayor, do you have a question on this?
Yeah, the entrances. What are those sizes now?
Sorry?
What are the sizes for the entrances now after the workshop? Because I thought we discussed widening them.
So, just one second. He's the, he's the developer for the other project, so he's part of that.
The other side.
The other side? Okay.
All right. Back. Yeah.
Hi. Nathan Melson with Civil Infrastructure Associates, 307 Hickerson Drive in Murfreesboro, Tennessee.
Thank you, sir.
And so, yeah, so we're, our scope is primarily responsible for the building on the rear of the site. And with regard, I guess, to the question for driveways on that side, so if you're looking at the plan on the bottom left-hand corner, south, southern corner of the site, the existing driveway is about 33 feet in width. There is space to widen it up to 40 feet to, it wasn't really necessary. We, I did a truck turning analysis for an interstate semi, and it was, the existing driveway was able to handle it, but I understand we would like to have a wider driveway for those, the traffic, and don't want to have to, any damage to the, to the public road if there happens to be just some issues turning in. We also checked, now, the, the other driveway on the site, on the rear of the site that connects to Hill Quaker, it's approximately 24.8 feet. We did the truck turning analysis just on that southern driveway, and it, where you're able to get a semi in, dock it, and then come back out without having to use that other driveway. And so we weren't, we're not proposing any changes because that driveway is primarily used for a, to refill, or refill one of the oxygen tanks that's in the upper left-hand corner of the site, and that's its primary use now, and they don't receive any semi-traffic in that driveway. So we weren't proposing to change it because it was able to, the, the refueling truck for the oxygen tanks are basically one of the large box trucks, so it's a much smaller turning raise and a 25-foot wide driveway, which is already there, can easily handle those.
Very good.
As for the front, or the, can't speak too much on the existing, or the parking lot, but I'll try to answer as much as I can.
So the thing I said, though, for the backside, though, it's 33 with room to widen.
Yes, on that, the, the other concern with the, so, but yes, to answer your question, yes, on that southern driveway, it does have room to widen. The other issue with that northern driveway is there is an existing water meter there, which I'm not sure what the size of the water meter is for that location. It looks like a four-inch or more, so there, the vaults there would prohibit us from really widening that out much. We could do maybe two or three feet on that upper left-hand corner driveway, but that's about all you could really get out of, but it's not necessary to, for the site to function.
Okay, so let me break this down, because I want to make sure, correct here. So the Bridgestone pathway entrances, that is going to be for individual automobile vehicles, not trucks?
Yes, sir.
Correct. And the way that you mentioned it at the workshop was, you've harem-boned the parking, so therefore, you come in one entrance and you go out to the other. That's the way it's designed now, correct?
The front parking, sorry.
So, so let's go front, let's go to the street, because at the moment, we've got left and right.
So we have, we have two projects, so we have the other engineer here, Randy, if you don't mind.
So, so I'm referring to, I'm on the agenda now, sir, regarding the 32 parking spaces. That's what I'm referring to at the moment, and I'm referring to coming out onto Bridgestone Parkway.
Yes, so this is just for automobiles? There's no semi-truck?
That's correct.
Okay. So I think, well, I'm, my comment was, we discussed at the workshop, being automobiles, cars only, I have no problem. But on the opposite side, Hill Quaker, I totally disagree it's not to be, it needs to be widened. You've got emergency vehicles, you mean, coming out of there, and although you get your trucks to turn out, you've got to get the city vehicles out there, too, you know, fire trucks. I mean, we discussed this at the workshop.
We did discuss this at the workshop. I think the biggest confusion right this second is, at workshop, we did the back first, and then we did the front. So you are strictly working on the front part of the building?
Yes.
That is what the item at hand is?
That's correct.
And then the next item we'll discuss, the rear of the property. So item at hand, front of the building is where we're at right now. We're fine with the parking layout the way it is, everyone?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Exactly. So across that bridge, we will discuss the back parking lot, next item.
Yeah.
Okay. There we go. Now we're on track. Any other questions or comments on this portion of the building?
Was Mr. Brown's comments for the back or the front?
Sidewalks are for both.
It's for both, all of them?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Excellent question. So no further questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Chairman, with all nine items being addressed, make a motion to accept as submitted.
Motion to accept as submitted. Do we have a second?
A second.
A second by both Mr. Rutledge and Mr. Mayor Cole. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We'll, we'll work through this. So now, for this next item. Make sure we keep our ducks in a row, so we're talking about the right thing and right section of a building. This is a very different scenario, as we have two developers working on the same property, so it can get slightly confusing. But item number nine. Site plan, Palm Commodities, new building addition totaling 5,400 square feet on 4.11 acres, requested by CIA LLC. Property located at 1289 Bridgestone Parkway, tax map 17, parcel 28.04, I2 Heavy Industrial Zoning District, property owned by Fiji Strategic Realty Investors LLC. Mr. Logan.
So this is the site plan request for the building portion of the site, and so same building, same zoning. These are pictures of the site. Of course, this is sort of the interior of the site where some of the employees park. So this was two weeks ago at the workshop, and this is the updated site plan. So the dotted line on this plan indicates the area that is by others. So it's the, kind of the reciprocal of what we just covered in the last item. So anything in the dotted line is by the other engineer, not this group. And by the way, this group is GMC. So again, the existing building is 62,800 square feet, and this particular site is not located in an architectural overlay district. And I know we've already talked about the sidewalks. So there were no outstanding staff comments, except, of course, for the driveways. So that completes the report. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Logan. A representative for this project, please come to the podium.
Hello again. Nathan Melson with CIA, 307 Hickerson Drive, Murfreesboro, Tennessee. I guess, go back to the, the comment on the driveways. We did, did want to mention that we did check the zoning code about, regardless, or regarding the width of the driveways. And according to the current code, as it sits, is driveways for industrial sites may be greater, greater than 30 feet, but no greater than 40 feet. And so, now, we'd be, I mean, we did widen the, the southern driveway. We can try to figure something out to make it work, or relocate the driveway to make it work, but just wanted to understand the count, or the commission's concerns with the driveway width as it's meeting code now, and we're expanding one, so just wanted to understand the concerns.
Thank you, sir.
So my question is, so just to create, kind of eliminate some confusion for me, you said that the one that you can't widen is only for exit traffic. Is that how I understood that? And that you're not having any two-way traffic in that? Is that how I understood you saying that?
It is not used for semi-truck traffic. That is delivering, delivering to the, to the dock. If you look on your plan, if you have it in front of you, there is a docking area on kind of the, the lower left-hand corner of the main building, and so we also have the truck turning analysis provided there on that same sheet, C2.0, which shows the, basically, your, your standard, you know, like 53-foot-long interstate semi-truck, that's what comes in, docks there. It can still maneuver, dock, and then leave without having to go back out. That is what they use there, that's their primary entrance for their delivery trucks. They have signage for that as delivery entrance only currently, and so that's, that's the way it intends to.
So I understand, I think our biggest concern here is, is that, so these two entrances are going to a direct location either way, right? So there's no stop-gaff to keep you from going from one entrance or exit from one to the other. So if a truck driver takes the wrong turn or takes the wrong entrance, he's still going to have to use that to get to where he needs to go.
Well, they, they lock the gates, and so before, and when, whenever they have a truck come in, they will have someone open a particular gate for them. So it is restricted access. It is not open to anybody that, that, if it's just some local that comes down the road and then wants to turn around, nobody can enter. They can come up to the gate, but that's it.
So then we're going to have traffic backed up on the, on the road. See, I see the concern? So normally, then, when you, when you tell me that, then we would tell you to put your gate further in, so you're not blocking traffic on Hill Quaker. You know, see what I'm saying?
It currently is, Mr. Rutledge. If you can see the line at the end of the driveway where the gates.
Okay, so he has enough time, room to get in.
There is ample room to soften, if necessary.
But then, if they do take that wrong turn in, then they're going to have to back, back out, right? So even if it's somebody that's making the delivery there. So I agree with Grant, Mr. Coats, Alderman Coats, that we need to make, try to make it 40-foot, if at all possible, because that's what we've asked everybody else, and then it helps eliminate concerns and safety for anybody else. So I don't disagree. I, I...
We certain, I accept your comment, and for, that is certain, that we can certainly add. I think in this location, we'll have to just fully relocate the driveways, and I'll have to check with engineering to make sure that there is enough spacing between the driveways so that we're not creating an issue there, because I think there is actually a, a minimum distance of separation between driveways. But we will certainly, if, right now, with the existing utilities that we have there, it can only be widened a certain extent. And with the existing structures that they have on site, it can be widened. But, so the other option is we can relocate it, and we, I've talked with Mr. Ram, and we can certainly look at relocating the driveway to allow for turnaround traffic, but...
And understand, I don't, I don't want to give off the impression that we're not willing to work with you on this.
Sure.
I think that this board has been willing to work with a lot of people and do a lot of things, so, you know, if you can't do something, you can't do something, and we're willing to really work with you on that.
Sure.
But, you know, like in the workshop, you know, it was, it was about this or about that, and so give us some definite numbers, where you, where you can be and where you can't be, and as close as you can get to 40. You know what I mean? Not, if it's about here, about there.
Well, you can get to 27 feet without getting onto that vault. Now, generally, when you have a vault like that, you want to have some space between the actual driveway and the vault itself.
That's true.
So that way, if there is a truck driver that cuts a little bit too much, you're not running over that, because you definitely don't want to run over it.
Right, yeah.
Mr. Logan, if you'd be so kind, I don't know if everyone can see it, but I believe the vault is next to the narrower driveway.
It is.
Just to the right, below the...
Down?
Down, just a little bit in the grassy area.
Little line.
Add little rectangular square right there. Those were the...
Right there.
So, well, with, with, with everything said and the willingness to work with us, please, Mayor Cole.
I would say at this point that we would need to defer this to the workshop and let you come up with, with whatever design proposal you and your client wants to do for the driveways, and then we can basically take this up at workshop next month.
And is the, I'm just making sure I understand the 40-foot request, just because that, y'all are just requesting that because that's the, the allowable width and...
Pretty standard to what we ask out of everyone.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just making sure, because that's, the way the, the code is, is worded, I just want to be, understand where the planning commission is.
And I think, like Mr. Rutledge said, we would entertain as close as you can get to that number. Myself, one central driveway, if necessary, you know, obviously would be more than 40-foot at that point, but, so there's some options on the table, and we appreciate the fact that you and your client are willing to work with us on that. So with that, as a board, should we make a motion?
I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, we've been very... I just want to say, Mr. Chairman, we've been very consistent about this 40 feet, if you look back, and we have been very consistent with all applicants, and that's what we're looking at, so.
Okay. And I just, can I ask a question?
Please, please.
This is primarily for staff, and that's just making sure, in, on a future plan, is there a more restrictive or another truck analysis that y'all want to see or on this besides the semi truck or the delivery traffic that they normally get?
I honestly think they went and looked at the truck traffic, it's basically 40-foot's what they're wanting, so, I mean, you can do whatever analysis you want, but they're still going to ask for 40 feet, so you might as well just make-
Well, yes, no, I'm not, I understand, I'm, I'm just, also just wanting to make sure, from like, fire department standpoint, circulation standpoint-
Since you put it on the table, if you can take our largest apparatus that we have for fire, due to the nature of this industry, that would be nice to see on paper, to make sure that they can get everywhere on property. So if you can have that for us at workshop, that'd be-
Good point.
I think one question we, I have as staff is basically, right now they have one entrance that is 40 feet. I think somebody, or, I think said something about maybe a centralized entrance. Are we okay with one entrance at 40-foot? I mean, we've already got one at 40-foot.
Well, that's why I made the statement, at that point, it would be wider than 40-foot for an entrance and exit with turn lane.
40-foot's our max.
They can't go over there.
So, if we're willing to do one at 40, he's already got one at 40 as well, I-
Yes, sir, thank you. So, please work with staff to make sure that we have our two driveways, so that you have plenty of truck, truck, truck traffic.
So you just got to have two, then? Two at 40, no matter what.
I'm going to go with the board on this one, since you opened this can of worms.
I think we'd like to see it at 40, but obviously there's something physical or condemning that they can't get to that, if it's 39 or 37, let's talk about it, let's draw it up. At the moment, we have very little information on what we're seeing, we can go out to the lot and have a look, but let's, let's be more definitive of, is there a reason why you can't get to 40 if it's 37 or it's 35? Let's list it on there, so we can understand it.
He's got one at 40, the other one's 24.8, and he's saying he can get it to 27, but what the problem is, there's a power pole and then there's a water vault on the other side. So he's, he's basically saying, he's going to have to close off this entrance and put another one. So what I'm asking is, are we requiring that he has two entrances? Because we need to be able to give him direction of what to give us back, if not, we're going to be in the same spot at workshop, not knowing what to tell him to do.
I'm thinking more with the logistics of their firm, they're probably going to need the two driveways.
And so I would look at what can, you know, see what you can get for maximum. If it's 27, it's, it's going to be, what you're saying, it's, it's larger than what we've got already on the plans. See what you can do to work it in, to get to whatever the maximum is, and then we'll have that at workshop and discuss it. Is that fair?
I mean, yeah, I think, we can try to come up with something.
We'll, we'll work it, we'll work it out together. We always get through it, that's the biggest thing, so.
Is that, is, is that all the concerns, the, okay.
Yeah, sir. So with that, I'll make a motion to defer this item until workshop. We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes, thank you, sir. Next item, item number nine is deferred, correct, Mr. Logan?
Yes, sir, that was a late afternoon deferral, correct?
Very good. Item number 10, set bond amount for the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 2, tax map 17L, Group A, parcel 8.04, R2 Medium Density Residential Zoning District. Mr. Logan.
Thanks. So this is the request to set the bond for the retreat at Finch Branch, Section 2. And you can see on the screen, the area outlined in blue is Section 2 of Finch Branch. And this section is approximately 12.89 acres, and it does consist of 31 lots. And you can see on the zoning map, this dark, almost like a, a red brick color is R2 zoning, which is medium density residential. So all of Finch Branch is medium density. And they have submitted the three estimates with the 20% contingency, and the packets are in your possession. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any questions or comments on this item? Everyone satisfied with the amount?
Make a motion to accept the bond submitted, 95,006.3.
We have a motion to accept is submitted, we have a second?
A second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion passes. Item number 11, bond and letters of credit. Mr. Brown.
Everyone should have the bond list in their packets. There is two that expire on, well, today, actually, have received a renewal and they, the originals are being overnighted, so we'll have that updated on the list tomorrow, once we receive the actual original. Everything else is up to date, though.
Very good. And item number 12, discussion zoning ordinance adoption process. So, Mr. Brown?
Basically, I spoke with Melissa today, with the comments we had at the last meeting, she was basically still working on those corrections today. She did get those completed and a draft sent over to Bo late, later in the afternoon. Now, I didn't think that's fair or right to give it to you and then you not have a chance to review it and then come in and make some motion or whatever. So basically, you've got the corrections that she's made, or if not, Bo will get those out to everyone. I think really what we need to know is, do we need to have another special meeting in October? Do we need to go longer than that? What does everyone prefer? What, what's the next step y'all want to do? Do you want to have the meetings now at the end of the planning commission workshop, since we should be close to just a few items and just every workshop have some discussion on it to, to keep going? Or do we still need to have enough discussion that it would be a special meeting? I know, I know y'all have had several meetings this year, and you may be getting to where it's, okay, can we just do them at, at workshop times?
That's kind of where I am. Everyone else, at the end of the meeting?
What all do we have outstanding still with it?
So, really review, final draft, and so we should be able to review it at next meeting. We'll get our draft, so we'll get our draft soon, Mr. Logan?
It's already in your inbox. I sent it about an hour and a half or two ago.
Okay.
Soon as I got it from Melissa, y'all have it, so.
So, well, I'm, I'm going to say we have homework to do, everyone. Let's review it, let's try and get everything tidied up by workshop and keep moving forward, because I think we're really, really close, we've worked really hard on this.
I know, one of the things we discussed in the, in the last special meeting, and you weren't there, was coming up with a plan to notify residents, how, you know, I think Alderman Coats said we should just kind of all put on our thinking caps and have ideas for that, so that we could come up with the best approach. So that's certainly a to-do item to dis, for discussion as well.
Please, let's to-do, and, and just in general, getting out in public and talking with everyone, and most of, most citizens know whom we are, so we can cover a lot of ground that way as well, but I'm open for any suggestions.
Right now, it's on the, it's just for discussion, so it's kind of, if y'all want some meetings, if you want to do it at XPC workshop, whatever y'all choose to do.
I'm okay with going to the next workshop.
Would you mind repeating what you just said, Mr. Brown?
I don't even know what you said.
I said it's basically just up to them at this point. They can, it's a discussion item, they can either discuss it more tonight, they can discuss it at the next workshop. If they want to have another special meeting, they can, they can do that, if they want to schedule another special meeting.
They discuss Airbnbs in private neighborhoods.
We, um-
When do they do that?
Well, basically, that will be addressed in the zoning ordinance, so once, once they-
It's already been done.
It's, it's probably got a regulation in there, yes, I don't-
I didn't see the regulation, I did see the people go into the house-
Ma'am?
And stay up all night.
Ma'am, ma'am, we will be having a, another workshop meeting, and if you would please either write down or contact some staff with those-
I wasn't contacted.
No, if you will contact them with your concerns, so that we can address them.
Well, they know that I'm going to have concerns. Everybody in that neighborhood is got concerns, and no one was notified.
Ma'am?
Sir?
We will have a meeting at workshop. Will you please-
I'm not stupid, you don't have to talk to me like I'm stupid.
Yes, ma'am, my apologies if you feel that I do. So my apologies on that. We will be having another meeting at our workshop at the end of the meeting to discuss this. If you will please address those concerns.
We included in the first meeting, but what has ever happened? And it happened, and I-
Talking about a new Airbnb.
Ma'am, I, ma'am, I don't know.
Nobody seems to know.
I, I can't answer that question.
Right after this meeting, we can get with codes and circle around, because I know you're, the, the specific Airbnb that you're talking about, and, and we can, we can talk more about it.
It's a big project, it's a big deal for a lot of people, and, and the burn.
Well, let it-
And they're not happy.
Let us close out this item, we'll get you with Mr. Randolph and the mayor, so you can discuss that.
I've already heard that, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am. So, Mr. Brown?
I was done, it's just basically up to, to the board what they choose to do.
I'm done after the next workshop.
So after the next workshop, we will be discussing the items on the zoning ordinance once again.
It's a little late, there's about four of them in there.
Yes, ma'am, and, and we'll direct you-
Close, once again, close to the barn door after the cow got loose.
Yes, ma'am.
The barn stood at that.
We will do as best we can, that's all we can do, thank you. Any other questions or comments? With that, meeting adjourned, thank you.